Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 29th, 2022, Meeting of the Gilderland Central School District Board of Education. If everyone could please silence your cellphones and stand and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first order of business this evening is to appoint a president pro tem. So I would welcome nomination from the board for, go ahead, Nick, Nate, sorry.
Aye, nominee Kelly.
Okay, thank you.
Aye, second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Kelly. You can come join me here and take over the meeting.
Okay, so first item to call attention to unfortunate loss that we had over the weekend. I'm going to read a brief statement and ask for a moment of silence shortly after. Gilderland Central School District has experienced great sorrow as we mourn the passing of Gilderland High School student Maggie Hamza. Maggie had the gift for making others feel better with her positive, happy, and caring personality. We know both students and staff at GHS will greatly miss her. Please join us in offering Maggie's family and friends our heartfelt condolences. Please take a moment for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment number one. We have one public comment this evening from Carrie Dunne.
Mind if I do this a little bit? Thanks. Well, a little short. Hi, I'm Carrie Dunne, and I teach at Pine Bush Elementary School. I teach music there. And I wasn't able to come to any of the budget discussions you've had the last two meetings. But I just, I was free this evening, and I just wanted to make a comment on those last two meetings, maybe the budget as a whole, and just, you know, put in a request for you to consider. And it really comes down to the, the class sizes that has been discussed the last couple nights. I did watch the meetings, so I have seen them and seen the discussions. And I think there were great points at the last meeting about these classes that are being raised right now, or those grades in like one through three, which are the pivotal grades that are feeling these effects. I mean, all grades are feeling the effects of COVID, but them in particular, being so young, they've never had a real two years or three years of school yet. And when I was going through the budget presentation, and I looked at the thought exchange, you know, the top thing for parents is maintaining lower class sizes. And I think that's been the theme for the last couple of years. And it talks about how this budget maintains or lowers class sizes of the 2021, 22 levels. But then when you look at the chart, there's three schools in particular, and I don't know the stories of Altamont and Westmere, but Pine Bush I do, that, that is not true for us because with the class, we have eliminated at my school, one of the sections. And I teach all of those sections because I teach music. And I can tell you, there's not, it's not one grade level or one class level, but the impacts are even larger than you're probably hearing at your level. If you talk to any of the teachers at any of the schools, they will give you daily stories of what's going on that we're trying to manage and really help these kids get back to the so-called normal, if you will. You know, what a normal day looks like and things like that. We took a giant step forward today. We had a little dress rehearsal at my school for some grade levels, which was nice. It was their first one in two years, so that was really exciting. But I digress. And I just, I heard the discussion last month about the federal funds. And, you know, we have these federal funds, what to use them for and things like that. I would just encourage the board to use them for these, especially the elementary levels, trying to keep those sections intact. Because it's not going to be an ongoing thing. I understand the money doesn't stay there forever. But I think it's there specifically for this purpose, to help these kids deal with what we're dealing with all the time. Every program in the world, whether it be P-2 or anything you bring in, is great. But it's only as great as you have management. And whether you're a first-year teacher, or you're a 15-year teacher, or you've had almost 30 like myself, management right now is a daily struggle. It is every day. And adding to what I'll say, my is a second grade going into third grade where we're eliminating, that's six and a half more kids on top of what's there now. That's a big deal. We can't get them the programs if you don't have the management because you're putting out fires all the time. So I just wanted you to consider, I know there are bubbles, you know, bubble, you have those reserved sections, but I know you need those in seventh grade and eighth grade. I think those are meant for that, something like that. The federal funds, I think, would be most appropriate for helping these kids get over and through the impacts of the last two years. And if we can keep those lower, that's, just as a staff member, I would say that would be huge. That benefits the students and it benefits the staff in so many ways. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunne. There was one other comment that was submitted by James Gonin.
Gon.
Gon. He didn't prefer it to be read, but it's posted on the website for your information. The next item is the consent items. We have four consent items, A through D. We need a motion. Nate and Rebecca? Are there any questions? Okay. Oh, sorry, we have more. Right, any questions? Barb?
I'll just move the consent agenda.
Okay, sorry, we got that covered. However, you can move to approve them if you'd like. If there's any, if there's no questions, we'll make a movement to approve. We'll take. All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Got it. Everybody, yes.
Before you move on, I just want to take a moment to congratulate Ms. Jessica Vandenberg, who is in our audience tonight. She is now officially the principal of Lynwood Elementary School. So congratulations. I also want to mention 20 individuals who tonight were approved for their tenure, which will become effective when we come back in the fall. So congratulations to those individuals as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. So the consent items are approved eight to zero. Moving on, information items. Dr. Wiles?
Sure. The first item under curriculum and instruction is to offer congratulations to art teacher Krista Gillis and her students at Lynwood Elementary School, Iris Reagan and Michelle Williams. These two students' artwork is being showcased in this year's Legislative Student Art Exhibit. This virtual event showcases the artistic achievements of students in grades K through 12 from across New York State. And this 32-year tradition is in partnership with the New York State United Teachers and supported by New York State legislators. It's the flagship event for our Youth Art Month. The exhibit will be available for viewing through December 2022 on the New York State Art Association website. So congratulations to our Lynwood friends.
Congratulations. Dr. Wiles is back up for superintendent information.
Yes, I just wanted to provide a brief update to our community around our discussions around the school start time. We have reconvened our school start time task force. They met last Thursday, and they're meeting again this Thursday, really to review the challenges and the implications we've had for the start time that we implemented for the 21, 22 school year. As you know, we have struggled with various parts of our ability to get all of our buses into both the high school and then the middle school in the beginning of the day, and then to get students out of those buildings in a timely manner at the end of the day. There's some things that we can't change about how we're structured here in Gilderland. For example, we can't move the physical location of our schools. We have lots of traffic on Western Ave and 146 and other thoroughfares as well, but those two are, are significant. And the other real challenge that's not likely to go away anytime soon is the shortage of bus drivers. So that we can't just hire more bus drivers and create more runs in order to make the necessary time between runs shrink. So the committee came together last week. We reviewed those kind of challenges and some of the things that we experienced over the course of the year and continue to experience. And then we shared some data that we gathered through a survey from our parents, K-12, and then middle school and high school students. And trying to get to the question of, we moved the start time in order to allow adolescents to get more sleep. So how did we do with that? Well, one of the things we discovered was that our response rate for students was not as robust as it was when we first did the survey back in 2018. So we're actually redoing the survey tomorrow. And we will have more complete data for the committee when it meets on Thursday. Students are actually doing the survey in homeroom, so we can make sure that there's good participation. So we'll have some more student data to look at. We're also getting ready to release a survey to our faculty too, to get their input on their perceptions of how students are engaging at various parts of the day and so on. Bottom line, it is a really challenging conundrum. We are trying to weigh how best to get everyone where they need to be on time, honor the research around the medical fields, conclusions that sleep for adolescents is really important with the confines of our school day. So this conversation is ongoing. We know we need to make a decision about what the 22, 23 school year will look like in early May, so stay tuned. Any, any questions from anyone? I know Rebecca and Barbara were at that meeting, and will likely be there again on Thursday.
I, you know, I can sum something up really well, but you know, there's no perfect answer.
I have been a huge proponent of delayed school start time, and I still am. But I'm also a pragmatist, and there's a lot of issues. And when, I think you, I think the meeting, we quoted like half of the high schoolers were arriving late on a regular basis. It was, it was a large number. You know, that's not sustainable either. And there's certain immutable systemic burdens that we have that we can't get past, the distance, the, the traffic. So I, I think we have to meet and come up with a consensus, but I don't think there's a perfect answer.
I think that's exactly right, sadly. But it is what it is. But we will try to do the best to balance all of those things out. So I just wanted to provide that update. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions online? Comments? None heard? Next is board president information. I'll go through the three items. First is the Capital Region BOSI's annual meeting. The annual meeting of the Capital Region BOSI's is scheduled for Wednesday, April 13th, 2022, at 5:30 PM. A tour of the new CTE buildings will take place before the meeting at 4:30 PM. Dinner will be served at 6 o'clock PM. If board members are interested in attending, please let board clerk Linda Livingston know. Livingston, no. Next item is the Capital Region BOSI's board and budget and board election vote. The 2022, 23 Board of Cooperative Educational Services budget and election will take place on Wednesday, April 27th, 2022. There are four seats up for election. This is the date of our special board meeting that takes place at 8 AM. The last item is our upcoming board, Board of Education election on May 17th, 2022. Petitions are available through the district clerk for any district resident who might be considering running for the Board of Education. Fifty-two signatures of eligible district voters are required based on 2% of those voting in last year's election. There are three three-year terms and one one-year term on the board that will begin July 1st, 2022. General information. In order to be eligible to run for the Board of Education, nominating petitions with 52 or more signatures from qualified voters in the district must be submitted to the district clerk on or before Monday, April 18th, 2022, by 5 PM. Anyone who has questions about the duties and responsibilities of the board member may contact a superintendent, board president, or any current member of the Board of Education. A candidate must be able to read and write, be at least 18 years of age, a qualified voter, and a district resident for at least one year prior to the date of the vote on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. Further qualifications and information is in the packet available through the district clerk. Okay, next is action items. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. First item this evening is a resolution to approve a memorandum of agreement with Unity House of Troy for federal IDEA flow-through funds.
Okay. I need a motion? Judy, and Rebecca, second. Rebecca, is there any comments or questions? None heard? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Eight, zero. Next item?
Thank you. Next, our service agreements for your approval with the Center for Disability Services in Greenberg North Castle, New York preschool district.
Need a motion? Rebecca, second. Nate? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Passes eight, zero.
Next is a resolution to approve a budgetary transfer totaling $26,250.
A motion? Gloria? Blanca, second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight, zero.
And finally this evening, pleased to report a donation from the Altamont PTA for the purchase of playground equipment.
Fantastic. Need a motion? Kim? Judy? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight, zero. Thank you very much to the PTA for the donation of playground equipment. That's fantastic. Okay. Next item, board president action. We have two policies up for adoption this evening. Cyberbullying and then the regulation for cyberbullying, bullying. They were up for information on March 8th and action this evening. Need a motion? Kim? Rebecca, second. Any comments or questions? Nothing? None heard? Motion, or, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes eight, zero. Okay. Moving right along. Board committee reports. I'll go with the audit one. We have not had a meeting since our last meeting, and I don't think we have it on the books right now. Right? The next thing up is to have Questar come and brief the board, probably maybe after budget time. Maybe figure that out soon for the audit. Business practices?
We have not met, and we don't have one scheduled at this point.
Okay. Communications? Gloria, are you?
Yep.
Great.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, got you.
Okay, we met on March 9th. We had a number of things on our agenda. First, of course, was community engagement regarding the 22, 23 budget development process. We reflected on the thought exchange results that we received, and a lot of the discussion focused on how to engage students and how to make their participation more meaningful for them and for the district. We brainstormed some ideas, including perhaps piloting the question in the exchange with a smaller group of students before releasing it. Maybe consider narrowing the question so it's not as open-ended. Setting aside some time during the school day to allow students to complete the exchange. Launching the exchange earlier in the school year so that it's not explicitly linked to the budget, because much of the feedback that the students gave us was not directly related to the operating budget, but it was important feedback, and we'd like to be able to reflect on it. Consider hosting student forums to discuss the results of the exchange. Recognize that students do want to be heard. We got that very clearly from the participation. And perhaps consider ways to demonstrate that the district is listening to their concern. So those were some of the brainstorm ideas. We'll be coming back to the board after we've made some further discussions on this. The committee also discussed the challenges for us this year with the budget, the challenge of telling our story. There's a large increase in state aid, but many of the priorities identified by stakeholders could not be included in the budget because of some unexpected and very significant increases in costs related to out-of-district placements. There has also been a lot of news about the significant amount of federal funds that school districts have received. It's therefore difficult to explain why the district cannot fully address priorities like lowering the class size at FMS and adding staff in the operating budget, as well as other requests submitted by the leadership team. I did suggest that we put together our budget materials for the public, and when we do that, that we focus on the reasons why people do choose to come to Gilderland and why they choose to send their students here, and how our budget does sustain all of the staff and programs that we have been successful with and have served our students very well, both before, during, and continuing after the pandemic. Some of those items, perhaps we should be including, would be focusing on the whole child, which we do as a district, a commitment to a healthy and safe environment, which is a big priority, supporting co-teaching, and a willingness to begin to address class size at Farnsworth. And although we couldn't do it all in one year, we have a phased-in approach. Our BOSI's communication specialist, Patrice, noted that we will be sending a newsletter to the community in early April, and we're hoping to use that as an opportunity to highlight the positive things that have been happening throughout our district this year, despite all the challenges we've all been facing. This communication can be a good prelude to the budget information that goes out in May. We did review a part of the handbook. We did section two. We made some suggested changes, and we'll go over all of that at the end after we've done the whole handbook, and we'll come to the board for your consideration of the changes that we're proposing. Next time, we'll look at team development section, and we are meeting on April 6th at 4:30. Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks, Gloria. And lastly is policy? Barb, are you the?
We'll be meeting on May 4th.
Okay, great. And not lastly, DEI? Kim's going to do it tonight?
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, so we went through our committee reports. We also have something now called DEI in Action because we want to share what's actually going on in our district that we're actually doing. So a couple examples. The Black Student Union and the Feminism Club, Feminist Club, they got together, they collaborated, and had, I guess, great discussions, presentations. They did a lot. It was very successful, according to Matt Pinchenau. They also had what's called the Student Voice, where they trained teachers and staff. And they, essentially, they have like a little, I think it's a sticker and then a button, and just notice on their classroom where it's a place where students were understood and listened to. Like it's, people know that it's a safe space. Like it's their allies. It's, students can orchestrate the actual conversations, but they feel that they're genuinely being listened to. It's essentially empowering students in their voices. They've been working on the land acknowledgement. We haven't heard back. We're trying to just see, like modify the search a little bit because they want it to be authentic to see whose land we're on. Also, we talked about multicultural observances, which is something that we all want to do. It's just very difficult because we talked about a calendar. However, adding all the dates to the calendar would be difficult. One thing is we talked about having students do read-alongs for their cultures, maybe highlighting certain multicultural areas at times. I know that the, what is it? The multicultural fair is coming up at the high school in April. I want to say April 14th, but I could be wrong. Very excited that they're doing that again. Also, we talked about, well, we voted as a group to move forward the discussion to the board, to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's something that's going to be discussed with public comment and everything at a later date, but that was just something that was mentioned.
Thank you. I assume there's no public comments number two? Or no emails since Lynn is not here? And I haven't received anything. Board ideas and sharing? Any comments or questions from the rest of the board? Go ahead, Nate.
Yeah, I was just thinking, so I mean, actually timely because after Gloria's presentation and Kim's as well. Something I've been kind of noodling around and following up on our students that came, I guess, two meetings ago about, or three meetings ago about the gun violence, is I'm trying to figure out a way through policy to get more civic involvement with our students at the board level. And one of the ideas I've been thinking about is creating a policy whereby students can make recommendations for policy additions, policy changes. And, you know, obviously, there'd be some layers in that. But, you know, I welcome any other board members who are here, who are listening, to reach out to me, and we can have some discussion. We have a long time before our next policy meeting, obviously. But I think there's, you know, I'm just trying to find ways. We've seen, and obviously, what we heard tonight is we want to get our students involved as best we can and at a greater amount, at a greater level. And I think we can do that through some other avenues, and policy might be one of them that we might want to think about. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen, but I welcome it not only from, I know we have a lot of students that watch our board meetings, so I'm expecting millions of emails tomorrow. But, you know, I welcome students to get involved and give us some thoughts on what they think we can do. I think this is something we need to be better at, clearly. And I think we've all had this discussion tonight about it. So, and I welcome the board members to reach out to me, and we can see what we can figure out.
Sounds great. Like a, like a form to fill out, the who, what, where, when, why of it all, and background information.
Yeah.
That's great. That's a great thought. Kim?
We didn't get a chance last time. I just wanted to commend both the high school and the middle school for the musicals. They were amazing, absolutely amazing. Just especially being able to go and see a show again and just like watch the kids up there doing their thing. It was just, it was so cool to be able to go and see those. So I just wanted to commend them and say they were, oh my gosh, they were amazing.
Anybody online? Blanca?
Kim stole my thunder a little. I was going to also congratulate the wonderful performances and the whole team involved with both of those. And additionally, I was just going to mention that I have the privilege of being part of the FMS PTA. I'm the board rep. And at the last meeting, we heard about how difficult the situation has been financially for student council because they missed out on the opportunity to fundraise due to COVID because they were not able to hold dances. And so it was a real pleasure to hear from the students. They did ask for some assistance. And so I just want to encourage any community members who are listening to please sort of keep their ears open or their eyes peeled for messages that come related to fundraisers for Farnsworth Middle School. And last but not least, I did pose this question at the PTA meeting. Marie, I'd like to ask you, are we allowed to have an eighth-grade dance? If by some miracle I can convince Mike Laster and the PTA, but is that even feasible? Because I know we're doing the prom, so I'm assuming it would be the same thing COVID-wise.
So I'm going to suggest that you let me bring that to the committee that we have that works on talking through all these kinds of events. It's difficult. I mean, right now, we have, you saw my update, we have a lot of cases at the middle school. So we need to balance the need to give students the opportunity to have these important experiences, but also to keep our eye on the health and safety needs as well. So let me bring that to our committee. We'll meet a week from today and can talk that through.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? All right, nothing heard. That concludes our meeting this evening. Record time. We need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Nate and Rebecca, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Sorry, I always want to do that. Self, self-evaluation, our board self-evaluation, please do it online or if you don't have it. I think everybody can do it online probably, since Linda's not here. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.